We'll move then to 5B, Special Order of Business, which is a presentation by Youth Leaders Against Violence. Please come forward and it looks like you have a PowerPoint for us.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for having us today. I am Claire Volker and this is my sister, Emma Volker. And we are seniors at Rockford High School and also members of the group YLab, which is Young Leaders Against Violence. And we are a youth-led coalition that works to prevent violence within our communities, so the greater Grand Rapids area.
All right, first, we are here to thank you, mostly for your continued support in declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and also to give you a brief presentation to illustrate that sexual assault is a public health issue today.
All right, so to begin to cover the extent of the issue, we just wanted to pull a few statistics surrounding sexual assault. So, one in five women and one in seventy-one men in the U.S. report being raped at some point in their lifetime. One in three teens have experienced some form of dating abuse. And abused teens are more likely to be revictimized as adults.
So what we have found is that a lack of awareness really contributes in the perpetuation of this issue. So, starting from a young age, we tend to educate children on stranger danger, when in reality, ninety percent of children, sexual abuse survivors, know they're abusers. So, usually, this is not the person jumping out of the bushes. This is usually a family friend, a family member, or even someone in a position of power, like a teacher. So, another myth that is often accepted as fact is that, you know, only a certain group can be affected by sexual assault. Usually, we talk mostly about women, when in reality, sexual violence is an indiscriminate predator. All groups can be affected regardless of age, gender, sexuality, class, nationality, or ability. What we have found also in spreading awareness around the community is that consent education is key. So, what we like to say is that a lack of a "no" does not equate to "yes." So, someone who may not be able to say "no," someone who's unconscious, someone who's incapacitated, crying, who feels threatened, really anything that prohibits communication and clear communication. Consent is non-coerced, enthusiastic, honest, mutual, unambiguous, alert, and reversible. And this is something that we're especially trying to spread at younger high school age, so that this knowledge is out there and people know exactly what consent is.
All right, so especially now with how people might use technology very often, we can see nowadays after-effects of sexual assault taking place on social media. So, this can take the form of bullying, so bullying or harassing the victim, or spreading myths and lies about the assault itself, or about the victim and possible reasons, or anything like that. And also, because you can be anonymous on social media and hide behind your computer, we see that it's easier to sort of spread these lies or harassment against victims.
So, law enforcement alone cannot solve this problem. We see that today, less than three percent of perpetrators will ever see a day in jail for the commitment of these crimes. And often, because of a distrust with the legal system, these crimes do go unreported by the victims. So, today, we see that sixty-three percent of rapes go unreported. So, to help prevent that, we need to create a culture that denounces sexual assault. We need to end victim-blaming attitudes. Those are the comments you hear, directed towards the victim. You hear, "What was she wearing? Was she drinking? He or she?" And we also need to stop excusing the offenders of these crimes.
So, how can communities help? These are just some ways that all of us in Kim County can help to end the epidemic of sexual assault. And this includes endorsing policies that promote safety and equality, assessing and minimizing risks of sexual violence in our community, standing up against victim-blaming culture, what she was just mentioning, providing support for survivors in any instance, and holding assailants accountable for their actions.
How can you help individually? Intervene to stop disrespectful and vulgar behavior that you hear? Lead by example? Promote healthy relationships, especially at a young age? Believe and support survivors? Create prevention policies at community workplaces or schools? Advocate for legislation that supports victims? And donate time or money to a domestic or sexual violence prevention agency, such as Safe Haven Ministries or the YWCA in Grand Rapids?
So, to kind of close off our presentation, we wanted to end with this quote. "Not all of us are sexual assault survivors, but all of us are human. It's not their problem, it's our problem."
Thank you, ladies. Very important message, and I appreciate you coming here today to provide that to us. Do our commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Morning.
I absolutely love, I say this every year, it's a little redundant, but I love when you guys come. I think this is the third year, and I'm so proud of what you're doing. I imagine your folks are extremely proud. Because, in my mind, you're rock stars. You're a couple of rebels. And you look at what's going on socially, in the media, movies, everything. You're bucking that trend, you know? The things that you're talking about are actually glorified, in some cases. And it makes it really tough, girls in general, especially, because when you're glorifying on this end, you know, you feel like, you know, where do I go from here? You know, it's almost like accepted. And it's not accepted. And as a father of three girls, and I have two granddaughters now, I might be a little touchy on the subject, but I just, I love what you're doing. A lot of people do things to be provocative, and it's really easy on social media and stuff to be kind of a hero behind the keyboard. You guys are out there giving presentations like this. You're being provocative right now, in a good way. And I wish more young people could do the right things, as opposed to doing things that are just socially, culturally accepted at this point, or it's what they do when you're teenagers. Well, how about instead of going out to Daytona, you know, and go out and get crazy and wasted, why not participate in meals and wheels, or something like that, something that is positive? And I'm just really proud of you guys. Keep up the good work, and hopefully, we'll see you again next year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to compliment you on a phenomenal presentation. The topic is so important, and we can't hear this message enough. And I'm really pleased that you're engaged in this, and your presentation was really so professional. And I believe you're from Rockford High School?
Yep.
And there are a number of commissioners here who represent the Rockford School District, the area our residents live. And my son goes to Rockford High School, and I just thought I would compliment you in going through that system to be able to stand here comfortably and make a great professional presentation and engage us, and call attention to how important this is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. When I was looking through quotes for leadership, something came to mind, and it was a former vice president. And his comment was, "When a woman is incoherent because of drinking too much, just because she cannot say 'no,' if you assault her, you are raping." And those are the things that need to come forward more and more, and you did make that point. My challenge to you ladies, because you obviously are, as they've said, very professional, you're very invested in this, finding a couple of peers who are male, who will come forward and also take a stand and say, "This is wrong." I've heard a male, female, young team address when I was in Oregon, and it was very, very powerful. We need to have the young men on board also. And I'm not saying that you are not doing enough, you are doing a lot, but just think about how we could expand that. And we hear you. We hear you because you are invested, and I thank you. It's a subject that's unfortunately reared its ugly head in my own household, and very, just very powerful. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I want to thank you for being here also. I talked to a lot of young men about different issues, but a lot of times, when we addressed the young men about sexual assault, we hit some of the bullet points, but I was educated on more details that I can also pass along. How do you get in contact with your organization if there's radio opportunities for you to talk to the public, or opportunities of speaking engagement at schools and universities?
There is an email address right at the bottom of this, which is StopViolenceGRTeens@gmail.com.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to finish up with Commissioner Breevy, who has some remarks, and also is going to talk about the tribute, which we're going to provide.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming today. This is definitely a topic that needs awareness, and it's a topic that we need to talk about. Sometimes, it's not easy, but I really appreciate all the effort that you and your colleagues have put into this, and thank you for spreading the word. After our board meeting, they have a banner they would like all of us commissioners to sign, and we'd also like to take a photo. So, if you guys have time for that, visit us over here afterwards. We do have a tribute, too. Would you like to present that now?
Yeah. Did you want to read it first?
Sure, I'll read it real quick. So, this is a tribute, and it says, "Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. We must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, believing and supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. Prevention is possible when everyone is involved. The first step is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for all of us to take action and to create a safer environment for all." So, we'd like to, as the Kent County Board of Commissioners, we'd like to proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and each day of the year as an opportunity to create change for the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any public comment this morning? If there is, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. I am seeing, our treasurer has public comment.
Good morning. I just wanted to bring your attention to a document that was in your mailboxes this morning. The Land Policy Institute of Michigan State University spent several months studying the Kent County Land Bank Authority and the economic impact that it has generated over the past several years. And this is their report, and just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it, and hopefully, you'll take the opportunity to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? I see none, so we will move to agenda item number seven, which is the approval of the consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Melton.
I move, I move the consent agenda.
Support. I didn't see that. Okay, Commissioner Mast. Support by Commissioner Mast. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Commissioner Voorhees.
To the resolutions under C, remonumentation. I can remember my history when somebody said, "Well, there's a monument on the corner of Burlingame and Twenty-Eighth Street." There's no monument there. My understanding of monument was quite a bit different than a surveyor's monument. But with GPS today, how important is this physical plugging something in at the cost of maintaining a physical thing when you've got GPS? That is very...
Are you asking that that be removed from the consent?
No, I just, a little, I brought this issue up, maybe this is my third year.
Okay, Matt, would you like to address Commissioner Voorhees's question?
The question is, as to how important are the physical monuments in GPS world? I think they're still very important. And that is, there has to be a physical reference in order to locate these positions. Now, we've got over four thousand monuments in the ground, and those positions now are fixed. I believe that in the future, as we move more towards a coordinate-based system, and that takes hold, we will refer more to what are called continually operating referencing stations, which are very high-accuracy stations. So, future counties, as they build out their remonumentation programs, will be able to leverage that technology in order to help place the monuments. But there's an adage that I learned from working with the surveyors when I first came to the county, and it's, the adage is, "Good fences make good neighbors." And at the end of the day, those fences are placed at physical locations, and to be able to go to a physical location and have that reference, I still think is very valuable. I do believe that in the future, Kent County has been a leader in this for the last quarter century. In the future, as other counties that are not as well-resourced, they will be able to leverage the GPS technology in order to have them physically locate their monuments, but I believe that there will always be a place for the physical monument.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the consent agenda? I am seeing none. This is a roll-call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Madam, Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yes, no, nays. The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move to run it to item, agenda item number eight, which are resolutions, of which we have several this morning. We'll start first with Resolution 28, and I'll call on Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I move the adoption of Resolution seventeen twenty-eighth, purchase of development rights selection criteria and application cycle for 2017.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions on this item? I am seeing none. This is not a roll-call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Got one, one opposed? Okay.
Make it two.
Two, two opposed. Motion passes. We move then to agenda item, or I'm sorry, Resolution, I should say, B, number twenty-nine, and I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution twenty-nine, which is the actual implementation of a nine-one-one surcharge that was passed by the population last November, but this starts as of July one, two thousand seventeen, so I move that resolution.
Support. Support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Is there any discretion on the part of the board with respect to this, once the voters have approved?
No, this is a procedural requirement.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. When we first started talking about this last year, I brought up the point of the Pennsylvania counties that have successfully, or filed suit to allow audits to make sure that the money that the taxpayers are sending, we're actually getting. Has there been any follow-up from the county on how or if Kent County could benefit from something like that?
Yeah, I do know that the litigation pleadings relating to those lawsuits were pulled up, and I'll ask Tom here to comment on that.
Certainly. We looked into the matter and those lawsuits at that time, and have been following and monitoring them. There are a number of suits that have been out there, not just Pennsylvania, but also in Georgia. But they have different environments, different state laws, in terms of authorizing audits or not. Cases in Pennsylvania have been dismissed because their statute did not come around and provide for audits. There was additional evidence in one matter that I believe is still ongoing, but it really takes a change in the landscape and a change in state law for us to be in a position where we might pursue a similar lawsuit.
Well, last, I mean, last week, I had a couple hours off, so I started making some phone calls. And I think we need to look a little deeper into this issue, because what you had said about this is just isn't a Pennsylvania issue is very true. In fact, this is an issue with counties, and not just counties, but local units and businesses that are actively suing. And this is more like a class-action lawsuit, where they are going into every county and every different, I mean, in different states. But talking to the Pennsylvania people, it didn't cost them a dime to sign up for this. This is very similar to the law firms that represent businesses and tax tribunals, where there isn't a fee upfront, but they take a percentage of what's winning. But what was really striking to me in the Pennsylvania cases is the biggest benefit, all three county commissioners I talked to, and even the emergency manager from one of the counties, Burke County, as soon as those lawsuits were filed, the state of Pennsylvania passed a law to allow audits. So, just the mere filing of the lawsuit triggered what we've been trying to do in our legislative priorities, is to get the state of Michigan to allow counties to at least audit their books. And we keep stalling and, you know, stonewalling. But here are counties, and there is one group that represents all of them. They hire local law firms to represent local counties, because like you said, the laws are different county to county. And I just think we need to, not pull out all stops, but I guess that's, you know, one way to say this, is, at the end of the day, and when I voted no on putting this on the ballot, is that I think as county commissioners, our number-one priority is to the taxpayers, that we are responsible for every dollar that comes in and how it's spent. And I can say time and time again, I mean, when Curtis Holt was here with his presentations, I asked him directly, "Are we collecting all the money?" And no one could give me an answer, yes or no. In fact, most people said, "We're probably not." And in the Pennsylvania case, it wasn't the counties that started this. There were companies that approached counties and said, "Listen, Company A here, we're looking at their surcharge, and then we look at ours, and there's a difference there." I mean, the telecoms aren't just not collecting it, we're not sending it all, but they're using it as a tool to draw businesses by giving discounts on rates that are supposed to be collected. And, you know, it's just, I think it's just prudent if we're representing taxpayers, that we ensure them, that because we're going to be doubling their fee on their cellphones, and most people, not me, have sometimes four or five phones in the house, and it adds up. Every dollar counts when you've got, you know, forty or fifty dollars on bills all over. So, you know, I still think it needs a look at it. You know, I don't know where it's going to go, but I think there's more to the story. And even the NACO reporter that wrote the story said, you know, "There's more to this story than just Pennsylvania, and you should take a look at it." I've got some information that the emergency manager sent me. If you want the contact of the, I guess, the key law firm that's behind this, I'd be more than happy to pass that on to you.
I do think this is an important issue, and I do think it's something that would be nice to be able to do, which is pretty standard, and that's to audit something that's directly related to taxpayer funding. I question whether legislatively it's going to get very far, and maybe the courts are the way that it has to go. Let me, let me take this into consideration, and I'll be back in touch.
And I got your email with all the cases, and I'm not like the other Stan that could sit and read three hundred pages of law documents with a lot of what is, what the definition of is, is, all that.
Believe, and I don't like to do that. But, but no, let me, let me look into this, let me talk to staff, and maybe even bring it up at executive committee, and see, you know, what we can do regarding this issue, because it is an important issue. Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd just like to echo some of Commissioner Ponstein's words there. I, you know, I actually worked in an industry where I actually saw this occur. There was a term for the use of cramming and jamming and all these other words, that they actually, like I said before, they would rather get the FCC penalty than comply, because they made a lot more money by cheating. And so, I think that in this instance, we should leave no stones unturned, and I'm a vote yes for this. And I am assuming that all of us are in agreement, that we need to make sure that we follow up and make sure that we're doing everything to expose anything that might be out there. And I have complete confidence in leadership that that's being done, whether we're hearing about it all the time or not. I'm sure you're working on it, and hopefully, we can come up with some sort of resolution soon. But I will be supporting this.
Okay. Any other questions? I see none. This is a, let's see, this is a roll-call vote, so I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt the resolution, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yes, no, zero no. The motion passes.
Thank you. We will move then to Resolution C, and I will call on Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move Resolution number thirty, Standing Rules Updates for two thousand and seventeen eighteen, Board of Commissioners.
Support by Commissioner Breevy. I will call on Commissioner, or Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did take a deep dive into the rules. We will probably have a couple more changes coming up. But one thing that we did miss in the rules, because we haven't had to do it in about thirty years or so, is there was a little technical error, well, some may say not an error, but it would have allowed all of the administrator selection process to go through just legislative and not the full board. So, we think it's important for all of us to have input and everybody be included in this process. So, I am going to offer up an amendment to the rules. I move to suspend Section five point one, C point six of the standing rules, to amend the proposed standing rules by deleting Section five point one B three, deleting responsibility of recruiting, hiring, and evaluating the county administrator controller to the Legislative and Human Resources Committee. Thereby, we would just follow state law, which would allow us to all be included in the process.
But that could be a board?
Yeah.
Committee?
Instead of just the legislative.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Voorhees. Let me comment on this a little bit. So, we have a special order of business coming up on the next meeting by Sandy Frostinsma, the chair of the subcommittee that's been appointed to look at the administrator recruitment and hiring. And it was in this process that we noted this provision that really didn't fit, because as Vice Chair Bolter noted, if you take it at its literal meaning, it would allow the Legislative Committee to totally deal with the recruitment and replacement of the administrator, which clearly is, should not be the case. And I got to believe that was an oversight at some time. I also know that this has been in the rules for years and years and years, and probably did not ever get noted, because we've never actually been into this position for many, many years. So, it is something that is important to be fixed. It is something that properly puts in front of the entire Board of Commissioners the job of replacing and recruiting the administrator. And so, I view this as really a fix that is essential, following state law. We would have picked it up earlier and made it part of just the general rule changes had we zeroed in on it sooner, but because of our deadline to approve the rules changes by the end of April, we can't send it back. We don't have time to send it back to that subcommittee, and that's why we're handling it here in this manner. So, the issue now on the table is this amendment that Vice Chair Bolter made. Is there any questions or comments on that? Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. So, if I understand, the motion to amend, if we delete five point one B three as a designated responsibility of the Legislation Committee, then the implication is that it becomes a full board obligation? Or is there another section in the rules that addresses that?
There's not a section in the rules that addresses it. It's state statute that makes it the board's responsibility.
So, the implication is it's our responsibility as a full board, unless we so designate in the rules?
Correct. So, our rules are technically in violation of state law, and this is...
I wasn't going to say that. I wasn't going to say that.
But we're going to fix that. So Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, just to follow up now, this being a full board process, the chair can appoint that committee, and either representative from the legislation, Legislative or Finance Committee can sit on that committee, correct?
Yeah.
But it's a chair appointment of the committee.
And ultimately, that, you're talking about the subcommittee that's looking at it.
Right.
They will not make any final decision. It stills coming back.
I understand, but the chair appoints that.
Right, correct.
Surge Committee.
Correct. And that's actually what started this whole process of realizing that this rule was out of sorts. Any other questions? Commissioner Tallin.
Thank you, Chair. I understand the desire to delete the recruiting, the hiring, the evaluating, but I'm wondering about things like annual performance evaluation, training responsibilities. It feels to me like those ought to remain with LHR. I don't know, but is there, was there really intent to remove all that? Then what happens to the development of the agreement, the performance evaluation?
The performance evaluation has historically been performed by the entire board. Training has never been an issue that has been broached during my tenure. I, as a, as a member of an association, I commit to forty hours of professional development every year based on my needs and areas that I need to improve on. So any person who sits in this position would have that same responsibility.
But if somebody said training was appropriate, not for you, but for a future administrator, because the board does the evaluation, it seems to me it should come from that same board. So I really would view the administrator as kind of exempt from all the other positions in the county that are done by the Legislative Committee.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, this does require a two-thirds vote. Is this a roll call vote?
No, we can make it a roll call.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call. So I will call on Madam Clerk regarding the amendment.
Thank you. The motion to amend. Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Volter.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallin.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndike.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion to amend is passed.
Okay, thank you, Board, to help us get back in compliance there. I will now entertain any questions on the initial motion, which is to approve the other changes to the standing rules. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. One of the pieces that I would like to have our fellow commissioners give some attention to is the placement of public comment. I understand the recommendation from this group is to leave it where it is going forward, but I would like to have the group give some consideration going for the next review to notice the timing of public comment in relation to special order of business. And I understand there's a balance there, that the special order of business are people we have invited in and have prominent positions and have to get back to their duties. And at the same time, we have to balance our duties to the taxpayers who take their time and expense to come down and address our board. I've been noticing this for the past few meetings and have been writing down the number of minutes before we get to public comment. Today, it was fifty-five. That's a long time to ask someone in our audience who comes to potentially talk to us to sit and wait. We've had other incidences where it's been in excess of an hour. So my request for the fellow commissioners is going forward to pay a little more attention to this area, and at the next review, if it continues down this line, to potentially move that above special order of business. Thank you.
Okay, I will call on Vice Chair Volter to just generally comment on the process and the resolution.
Yeah, and we did talk about public comment. We actually debated ad nauseam whether we needed two public comments, where the public comments should go. It is my understanding, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, that the chair does have the discretion to amend or move around the public comments. So I think we've had one meeting where we had sixty public comments, and in that case, it is up to the chair's discretion to bump that up in the agenda process. So that's kind of why we left it there, have at it next time, but that's where we landed, so.
Do you have any other comments on the changes?
I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Melton.
It's actually not a question. This was really, as I put to myself, a little bit of trial by fire for me to be considered to be on the Standing Rules Committee right off the bat. And I can assure those of you who are here listening and all of the other commissioners that I was very, very impressed with the detail, the diligence, and the amount of reading and work and true thought that my fellow board members gave to each and every part of these standing rules, which is not an easy thing to do. I have utmost respect for how the process was done, and I just would like to thank my colleagues on the board and just, again, assure our population that these were looked at very, very carefully. Just shows you though, as careful as you think you are, sometimes you miss a little something, but it's not because it wasn't well thought out.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a question. Commissioner Bukowski pointed out, it was really nice to, the girls from Rockford, they were fifteen minutes into their presentation, so thank you very much for that. As far as special order of business is getting on the agenda, is that set by the Agenda Committee, or is it by the chair? I can't remember, because sometimes we have four of them.
Yeah, I know. It's set by me, and we, I try very hard to never have more than two. We have had a significant increase in requests in the last year, and there are times where, like, when we do a very brief recognition of the, like, employee of the quarter or something like that, we may throw a third one on. But trust me, I don't like it anymore.
I just, I couldn't remember where, the origin of it, that's why I'm asking. So it's the chair's discretion.
I worked with Pam on trying to make sure that we limit it to no more than two. So, Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I just briefly wanted to make a statement. As soon as we're talking about public comment, it gives me a chance to go on record and say, we don't have a lot of public comment because we meet at eight-thirty in the morning when most people are working. I don't even know how we have these meetings so early without even pulling some of our Kent County employees and heads of different organizations away from important work. And I'm just surprised that we are having these meetings at eight-thirty, and it's been happening so long, I think it's probably going to continue in the future. But just hearing about the public comment gave me a chance to go on record that that's something that's always puzzled me. And that alone has brought down our participation in public comment, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see none. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to Resolution D, and I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I would move Resolution Thirty-One of today's date to amend the Alleghen County Equalization Agreement from the Bureau of Equalization.
Okay, support?
Support.
By Commissioner Ponstein. And to start us out, I would like to invite our Equalization Director, Matt Volter, forward and comment on it. I know there were so few questions at the committee level, and so I thought it might be easiest to just start out by having you address us first, and then we'll go into questions and comments.
Sure. Thank you very much. Yeah, before you, what you have is an amendment to a contract that was initiated in two thousand and sixteen with Alleghen County. And what that contract is for is for the Equalization Director Services, but really the overall administration of the Equalization Department. The contract, as currently written, contemplates the inclusion of the wages for a full-time deputy director. And upon the occasion of the pending retirement of our deputy director here in Kent County, we entered into discussions with Alleghen County, and I looked at this as a way for us to retain our team. And so what we've come up with is a recommendation to amend the contract where, upon the occasion of the Kent County Deputy Director, Alleghen County will assume the cost of the same deputy director under the Alleghen County budget structure. And so what this really is, is it's a cost shift between Kent County and Alleghen under the existing conditions of the contract. What this does is it allows us to retain our high-quality talent, which, for me, is imperative for us to continue to move forward with this collaboration. And I really don't see it as a subsidy in any way between the two counties. Alleghen County's budget is intact and at the same level that it was prior to entering this. This is just shifting a portion of the contract from the Kent County to the Alleghen County side of the ledger, if you will. Be happy to answer any questions that you have. I think there are numerous benefits that come from this, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We will open floor to any questions or comments. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. So I was at the Finance Committee meeting, was trying to follow along too. Just to clarify me, so what is all included when you say that Alleghen is going to pay for this position? We've got, from what I gather, is someone retiring, we want to retain him. So I'm assuming, as a retiree, he's going to have X amount of benefits. What is that package that Alleghen's doing? Is it just salary, or is it benefits then too?
There's going to be salary and benefits.
Okay.
But then also, that individual's also going to continue to work and perform work on behalf of Kent County.
Which is fine, I got that part. I just wanted to understand what exactly is Alleghen paying in the position and how it's set up, so thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Hey, Matt, in the Finance Committee, I think you said, and the way I interpreted it, was that as part of the contract, you get five thousand dollars for your services, and your level is the highest level as for an assessor, right?
Correct.
And other counties need that.
Correct.
And so I thought that five thousand dollars for a premium on your license was low. And I thought that maybe I have a higher value in your licensure than--
Whereas a person.
Well, yeah. Person first, and then license. So, yeah, I voted no because I thought that was very low, and we're amending the contract, and I thought since we're amending the contract, we should address that. So I just think five thousand dollars for everything you bring to the table.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's, that's where the market is.
Well, I--
Does that make any sense to you?
Well, I appreciate the sentiment, I really do, and I certainly, if someone tells you they think you're worth more, then I appreciate that as a compliment. I look at this from a perspective of an overall administration of the property tax here in Kent County primarily, and also looking at what kind of impact can we have in the spirit of collaboration with our intergovernmental collaborations between the counties. When the CCWG came out with their recommendation and said they wanted to pursue partnerships with like organizations, you know, I really, I really took that to heart. I really believe that, within the context of the overall administrative function that I'm performing, that that is a fair amount at this point. When you look at what I'm doing and the way that we're able to multiply the staff that has been developed here in Kent County and promote standardization and promote the collaboration, I believe that it's, that it's a fair thing. Now, having said that, we do have the occasion now where we added Alleghen County in two thousand and sixteen. We've been collaborating with Montcom for the past several years now. And Montcom's contract is going to be coming up at the conclusion of this year, in the end of December. And so we will be looking at the Montcom and Alleghen and Kent collaborative from a, from a different focus now, because we have three counties, and we will be looking to look at a different allocation formula when we get to that judge.
I guess my position is, is that I get collaboration, and that's great, but I think that if it takes you away from your duties at Kent County to operate these other counties, I think there should be a premium on that.
Do those contracts come before this board?
They will.
Okay, so, you know, I guess one point--
Well, we're amending this thing now, that's why I brought it up, Mr. Chair.
Right, right, right. No, I understand. And then when he does his adjustment, maybe then we can get into that in even more detail then too. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm not entirely sure, if you can articulate a little bit, what is the difference in service and performance that the county, Alleghen County, would get if this is approved? You know, it talks about overseeing. What does that constitute? What would you be doing differently, if anything?
Really, nothing. This is simply changing the personnel mix a little bit in terms of which budget it's coming out of. Currently, I have two deputy directors of equalization in Kent County. One is assigned full-time here, one is assigned full-time in Alleghen County, but maintains her position as Kent County Deputy Director.
So aren't you increasing your overseeing responsibilities?
Well, no, I'm currently overseeing both of those individuals at this time. So there's really no change in my scope of effort. There's really no change in the scope of effort of the two deputies involved. It's really just a matter of amending the contract to reflect who's paying for the one deputy going back onto the Alleghen books and coming off of the Kent County books. And I might add, there's also a differential there of about twenty thousand dollars a year, which is a direct savings to Kent County as a result of this change. So over the course of the three years of the contract, Kent County will save about sixty thousand dollars as a result of this.
Commissioner Corndike.
Thank you, Chair. So this is an amendment. Right now, are you being paid anything for the work that you're doing as part of the contract? He is.
The county is, yes.
Okay. So the small amount of money that you're getting, why did, why did we break that out versus just keeping the cash, sort of, the money the same? I guess I don't understand that. Because when I read that, it was three thousand is what you're being paid, and two thousand is for travel time, or miles or whatever, more of a reimbursement.
Right.
So how would you track the time that you, you know, the money that you're being paid now to the contract versus the five thousand that the county's getting back with this amendment?
The original, the original construction of the costs included several things. It included the salary and wages of the deputy director.
So the overall contract, you just said there's a twenty thousand dollar savings for--
Right.
I mean, that's big.
Correct.
And that really wasn't anywhere to be seen when we were reading the resolution. Are there, so those are the type of things I need to know to make an informed decision whether it's worthwhile or not.
Right.
To have you continue to do this for, now, instead of five thousand, it's twenty-five thousand. Is that the right amount, or is there a different amount? Taking everything that's part of the amendment into consideration and trying to figure out dollars now versus dollars that we were paying last month?
Well, we're, the current deputy who is retiring is at the top of the pay scale. When they retire and go to Alleghen, that, that position will be completely eliminated from our budget. The other director that was promoted last year that's going to be shifting back to Kent County has been here for ten years, is at a different pay scale. That's where the differential for the Kent County books comes.
So that's where our savings is.
That's where our savings is, is in the differential between the two employees.
But what you're doing, you're now just being compensated for when, in essence, you weren't really being compensated previously, you were just sort of overseeing your staff that was doing the work.
Correct. I maintain, I maintain the oversight of the overall operation.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
In preparing the amendment and talking with Matt, the dollars in compensation you're seeing there were in the original agreement with Alleghen. So they're, they're not being stripped out. The only thing that was stripped out of the compensation was what Alleghen was paying Kent County for the deputy director services.
It would have been much easier, my point was, if you could have just laid out the current costs, new costs, overall, then it, it's easier to make a, you know, just a purely current costs, new costs, overall, then it's easier to make a, you know, just a purely financial decision based on cost savings versus time. Anyway, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I trust you completely. I think this is obviously, it ends up being good for the county. I like the outcome, the savings. The only problem I have is just the process, and I don't know if we have a precedent for this type of thing. It just, at first blush, it appears to be kind of a shell game, unless you are sitting at this meeting and understand all the components. It's one of those deals where somebody reading the papers, they're like, what's going on here, you know? So, that would be my only red flag, is just the appearance of it. It's a little awkward for me. The results are great for the county, and the trust factor's there, so that would be my only little red flag, just appearance.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I see none. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.